Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to welcome you today on behalf of the Commissioners and the citizens of Pitt County. Call this meeting to order and let's have our roll call, please. Raise your hand. Have that count. Okay. Let's stand and have our invocation in place, please.
Please bow. Dear Lord, I want to thank you this evening for the citizens of this county, the leadership, staff, and the people. I want to thank you for the return of the young lady home. Ask you to continue blessing the youth here in Pitt County and all over the United States and the world. Help us to love, help us to protect our youth, and help us to be good people for your name. In Jesus' name we pray with love and understanding. Amen.
Please raise flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, first order of business?
First order of business is a public hearing on an economic development project. If wanted, you have to step forward and...
Mr. Chairman, the approval of the agenda.
You making that...
I do.
I second it.
You second it. All raise your hand for your approval. So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The project this evening is Phase Two of a two-part project. We have previously approved incentive packages for the manufacturing component. This is for a Phase Two, a headquarters in downtown Farmville. It includes the rehabilitation of an existing building. The investment that the county would make in this project is $6,250 in order to leverage building reuse funds from the State Department of Commerce.
So move.
Not yet.
Oh, excuse me. Public hearing.
See, we all get ahead of ourselves.
Public hearing. Okay.
Any other presentation now before I declare the public hearing? If not, I declare the public hearing open. Anyone sign up to speak, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, nobody signed up, unless there's anybody in the audience who'd like to step forward.
Anyone that desires to speak to this issue? If not, then I declare the public meeting closed, and now we have a motion.
I move for acceptance, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Chairman, next item on the presentation. We have the recognition of three Boy Scout members to be on the Eagle Scout accomplishment. If you can go down.
Motion to recognize these scouts. Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I second.
Thank you.
This evening, we'd like to recognize three young men who have achieved the Eagle Scout recognition within the Boy Scouts of America. And these are three young men who represent troops here in Pitt County. And in Pitt County, we'd like to recognize both the Eagle Scouts and the Star recognition within the Girl Scouts, but obviously we're doing Boy Scouts. And nationally, I think there's about less than 2% of all boys who enter the Boy Scouts of America actually go on to actually earn the Eagle Scout. In Pitt County, that percentage is significantly higher than the national average. So I think we see that by recognizing the young men. So as we call your name, if you'll come forward with your... anybody you brought with you, parents, scoutmaster, friends, family, whoever you have. But we'll call James Michael Adkins first, if you'll come forward. And we have people taking pictures. If you can be part of it, and we can take picture for you. Take a picture. Just line you up right here. Hello.
Keep pushing them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read this?
Please.
For the audience, we have a certificate for each young man. It's entitled Certificate of Appreciation. It's awarded to James Michael Adkins for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he designed, constructed, and completed a challenge wall for the refuge. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 26th day of March 2018, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr. Mr. Owens?
Do you like to say something?
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Wyatt Oliver Blackman.
Double D.
Come on forward again. I'll proceed to reading again, if you will. Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Wyatt Oliver Blackman for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he created a clean and safe landscape area and built a dog ball pit at the refuge. Again, presented by our Pitt County Board of Commissioners, 26th day of March 2018, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens.
Thank you. You like to say something, too? Coming back again?
Our third recognition tonight is to Matthew Carl Williams. He'll come forward. We'll proceed and read the third one. Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Matthew Carl Williams for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he refurbished and built wooden bookcases for the pastor's office of Hollywood Church. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 26th day of March 2018, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr.
Thank you. Saw this young man when he was coming in. Would you like to say something?
No, sir.
At the beginning of these presentations, the manager alluded to some statistics about the few numbers of people that acclaim and do the work that is required to be honored by this. There's no more joy to me than having young people to participate in life and to have parents that communicate with them that brings about what in essence was presented here tonight. And that's the youth that I'm proud of. Thank God.
I think there needs to be a merit badge for public speaking. Charles. Charles. There he is.
I stand corrected.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Next on your agenda, you have public addresses to the board. We have people signed up. As we call your name, we'd ask you to restate your name and your address. And the county attorney will read our statement on public addresses.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. When you arrive to the podium, please state your name and address for purposes of the record, and I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
First, we have Charles Cradle.
Hello again. My name is Charles Cradle. I live at 1833 State Mill Road. Can you hear me? Okay. Today, when I left home, there were two large yard engines parked in front of my house running. The day shift left from there, they'll run till tonight. If they have a night shift, they'll run all night in front of my house, parked right in front of it. Shortly after I left, and I'm sure by now, the southbound train from Rocky Mount came in and parked between myself and Ms. Brown's house. And it's sitting there as I'm speaking to you, running now. This month, the southbound train has parked between our houses 17 times, and the yard engine running. And the yard engine's been parked there running in front of my home 11 times. Now, I wasn't home every day, so that's probably a greater number. Last night, Sunday night, the southbound train from Rocky Mount came in at 3:38 PM, and it sat there running at a very high idle for some reason. Usually, they will at least idle them down. But it sat running at a high idle until this morning at 12:29, when it left. I know, because I still awake. The yard engine has two shifts, as I told you, and the second shift starts at 10:00. Now, they're switching through that crossing after 10 o'clock at night, most every night. It gets through around 4:00. We get to hear it blowing the whistle the whole time. All this for the convenience of the Greenville public, who has to drive and now don't have to tolerate the inconvenience of the train. But we kind of feel like we're thrown under the bus here. We were promised that there'd be no standing, running trains. That's not true. We were promised there'd be no impact on our community. Nothing could be further from the truth. We feel like we've been robbed of our... the enjoyment of our homes and of our property and our well-being, because it's affecting us. I'm telling you. You don't sleep, it affects you. And we just... we need some results. This has been going on for years. Four, five, maybe now? So I just ask you to continue what you're doing. I know you're trying what you can. Pull in the President, if we have to, but let's please give us some relief. Thank God for what you do.
Thank you for coming, and you are very patient. I know the members of this board have had all sympathy with the issues that you presented to us. Continue to do that, and we will continue to strive to see if we can have some input. We have not done anything at this point of any benefit to you, basically, but we do thank you and continue to come forward.
Brenda Brown?
She's the one that lived in front of him. My name is Brenda Brown, and I stay out on 1861 State Mill Road, across the street from the train place. We can't get no sleep. Can't get no... that's my main problem. We can't get no sleep, because the train is always parked there running for nothing. I left home after he did. Sitting there running. Last night, well, yesterday evening, when I got home about 5:00, the train was already there, so I don't know what time it got there. You can't even go to bed and go to sleep 12:00 at night, because the train's sitting right there running at a high idle. This been going on now for almost four years. When are we gonna get some relief? It's...
Thank you, ma'am. The same as I said by the previous speaker. Do we have any other communication since these folks have been back here about any legal aspect that we've talked about?
Since they've last been here, we have had some minimal but limited progress. And I'll tell you what we've done. James Rhodes and I have met with a representative from Walter Jones's office to seek some additional support from the federal level. We have sent an additional letter to the management team, the CEO and general counsel of CSX at their headquarters in Florida. The other thing we've done to help illustrate our point is we've worked with our Public Information Office, Montgomery and his staff, and we have posted cameras with the cooperation and assistance of Mr. Cradle and Ms. Brown that did... that have filmed it for a multi-week period, and we've used time-lapse technology to better demonstrate both the sound, the decibel, and the amount of time that the train is there in between their homes. So we're hoping that a multimedia approach might help demonstrate further to the folks with CSX who are just ignoring our concerns. And I can say to you with probably the same level of frustration as Mr. Brown and Mr. Cradle, but we are not giving up, that the Safety Transportation Board has not helped us, our delegation in Washington, DC has not helped us, our delegation to the state level has not helped us, and the corporate leaders at CSX have not helped us. But we have been there. I have been in Ms. Brown's home to feel it rumble, to see how close the train is. We've walked the steps from Mr. Cradle's home to his tracks together. We've walked across the street. We have provided multiple solutions. We do not have the legal standing to file a lawsuit, in my opinion. If we did, I would have already recommended that this board do it. But it's not, in my opinion, prudent to assert a claim in a court system when you don't have legal standing to bring it forward. All we can do is continue to present that message as often as we can. Does that mean my time is up?
I believe you can get all the time you want.
And so, that's where we are. We have... at a future meeting, I would like the board to see the short, few-minute production that Public Information Office did a great job with. We intend on sharing that with the leadership and with our contacts. The Vice President of Government Affairs is John Dillard. He seemed to be helpful in the beginning. And the only thing I'd say is, I think, and I think Mrs. Brown and Mr. Cradle would agree with me, that the problems we're dealing with today are somewhat different than the problems we've started with. And we have made, I would characterize it as significant progress, on the southbound and northbound trains, only to be replaced with a worse problem, which is the night train. And there's still some residual problems from your southbound and northbound trains. But we have... CSX has responded initially to those initial complaints. But when we started to see a glimmer of hope in that arena, they started a night-switching operation that begins at 10:00 and goes back and forth across the train. We've also investigated quiet zones, and not to belabor the point, but we have done all of the research and shared that with the neighbors about what it would take to implement a quiet zone, which means no whistles can be blown. We spoke with the Railroad Transportation Board Authority out of Washington, DC. James Rhodes and I spoke with her several times. And what we learned is that quiet zones are not applicable in a switching yard. And so, we could go through that process, but it wouldn't be applicable to the operation that's going on right there. We said we wanted to go forward and do it anyway. We've gotten all the information. That is a very costly process. It would require the local government to expend upwards of a half a million dollars to outfit the gates that come down. And if you do that, just to have something done, because you've said you've done something in form, it's not going to solve your problem, because they're going to continue to blow the whistles when they have this switching operation that begins at 10:00 PM. And they've advised us that they have no intentions of ending that operation anytime soon. And that seems to be the most bothersome, because it's extended whistles and it's through the night. We continue to keep the lines of communication open. I listened to Ms. Brown's voicemail that came through at almost midnight the other night. We are open to any further direction that this board wants to provide to us, and we are not relaxing on our diligence. We just have not had success.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Tom.
You know, it's surprising to me that we will have floods and things like that, and the federal government will step in and the state and provide funds to buy people out. How many properties are affected?
Two. Three. Three.
What would it take for us to buy this...
Five.
Buy the property? Obviously, there's not going to be anything done. And could you buy the properties for less than half a million dollars and relocate these poor people? They may not want to be, but under circumstances, it doesn't look like they're going to get any relief, other than possibly trying to relocate them.
We had that conversation with Walter Jones's office as well, and he was also going to look into that aspect.
I'm for that.
Thank you, Tom, for your overture.
Thank you.
The board will take, I suppose, through council and the manager, those requests and those suggestions. You know, when you have a futile cause or have no answer, you just keep blowing in the wind, so to speak. But we've got to find some good resolution, and Tom's suggestion is overture in that correct.
The...
Mary.
The change in administration, there seemed to be some switching going in administration of CXX in one of those meetings that I gone to. But those houses been there for a long time, and this station has not been there that long. So maybe the time periods and stuff be added to that. Maybe that would help the congressman know about what problems we're having.
The problem, Mary, is that railroads have got special considerations that go back 150, 200 years. And there's not much you can do, unless they want to do it. So I'm all in favor of buying them out.
I'm for that.
If they're...
If they want to sell it.
If they were willing to be able to do it, of course, that would... the board's action to do so, but this is ridiculous.
You shouldn't live a lifetime in a house comfortable, and then now you can't even rest and sleep.
I mean, there are laws that say you're not allowed to deprive somebody of their, you know...
Peace.
Peace and quiet.
Peace.
And yet, the railroad can do it with no consequences.
Janice, take that and work with it, and let's bring it back at the next meeting to see what the board would like to consider. And if these good folks will come back and continue to work with us. Thank both of you.
Thank you.
All right. Who else you got?
Next, we have Tim Albritton.
Good evening. Tim Albritton, 140 Niblick Road, Grifton. I would like to continue with making the Grifton EMS issue a matter of public record. Okay? I do have an update, too, that I would like to follow up on after I finish. If you let me know when I'm about two minutes in, I'll try to wrap it up. It is apparent to me that the Grifton EMS team and probably others in the state lack oversight. You know, I see human resource, HR oversight, as a problem. I have heard of numerous... oh, by the way, my head does not disrespect. I just finished three weeks of radiation, and my hair's coming out, so I apologize. But I've heard numerous alarming, unfair, abusive, threatening, intimidating, and other unprofessional behaviors concerning Grifton EMS. These issues date back several years. Clinical oversight. The issue that we're dealing with, the original issue, creating medical risk, denying service, has at least a three-year history. Clinical oversight is a problem. Financial oversight, I don't know about, but I do intend to research that, too. I have heard of what I would consider as unethical donation tactics, and this problem also is several years old. So when I say oversight, I'm looking at HR oversight, clinical oversight, and probably financial oversight, but I don't know. I will find out. I think the key thing here is several years these issues have been going on, okay? And I believe this should be addressed immediately, as soon as possible. I suspect the Grifton EMS team is not unique in this problem. I suspect that other towns, bordering towns, probably have the same problem in the state. I don't think it's really fair to expect a county, a regional, or a state guy to be responsible for local town issues. These associates, county, regional, and state, do not know what the issues are in each town.
One minute. Give one minute.
Thank you. Nor do they have the time to find out, nor do they feel the pain. Nor are they... they are so far removed from the issues that they're not effectively dealt with. I believe one suggestion would be let the local town have HR input. These guys do not have clinical abilities, as a general rule, and could not provide that oversight, but I think they could provide the HR oversight. This is a possible solution. It's not what I'm asking for. I would ask you to consider it, because I think it would be effective not only for Grifton, but other towns in the state as well. So I'll get my update real quick. Steve Taylor did call me, and he said the issue was addressed. Steve Taylor is a county EMS guy. I'm not sure what his title is, but he couldn't tell me what they did. All he could tell me was that they have addressed the issue. My father was taken back to the hospital here...
Didn't finish.
Was taken back to the hospital. Grifton EMS came out. They were very professional, very prompt, you know, very courteous. I asked them whether there be any problem with taking him to Viden. They said, "We'll take him anywhere he wants to go." Okay? So, that being said, you know, I don't know about your children, but my children wore their halos and their wings, too, when they were under scrutiny. Okay? The Daily Reflector also followed up and did an interview a couple of weeks ago. And I apologize, my detail... I have lost a lot of detail over the last three weeks due to treatment, but I think there has been some progress, but I see more progress that needs to be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. I think Steve Taylor is a representative... Dr. Patel, who's the medical director for the EMS system through Viden, who looked into the matter and researched it. He did provide a written letter, basically saying it had been investigated, could not tell us what it was, because it dealt with personnel and medical protocol and such and such, but did say that he had handled it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, who else?
Yes, last one who have signed up is Leo Van Boran. Am I saying that last name correctly or not?
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Appreciate what you do for the county. I'm here for the Rahm McDonald House. I don't know if this was the right moment to sign... the right sheet to sign up for, but you're going to be looking at signing a new lease agreement, and do you want to call me up later, when it comes up?
Yes, you are on later on the agenda, so don't need to use this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
That's all we have signed up. Unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward?
Okay, next.
Okay, and next on the agenda, you have items to report. And the first one is on the Southwest Bypass Corridor Land Use Plan. We have Eric Gooby from the Planning Department.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I am here tonight to follow up. We had previously reported on November 6th to the board that we had kicked off the development of our Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. Just to give you a little background information, just to refresh the board, the plan is a cooperative effort between Pitt County, the towns of Winterballet, Aiden, and the city of Greenville, as well as Greenville Urban Area, MPO, and NC DOT. And again, the bypass is the county's highest transportation priority on the North Carolina Transportation Improvement Program. If you've been in the area of the bypass, you know it's well under construction at this point, with an expected completion date of June 2020. So just wanted to kind of talk about the efforts that we've undertaken on this plan real quickly since we reported in November. The first thing we did was we invited several stakeholders. We identified about 60 people within that area as a major stakeholder in the corridor, invited them, had interviews with them down in Winterballet at the Depot on November 21st. We divided them up into six different groups. We had builders and surveyors and engineers, environment and open space. We had Dr. Bray from Time for Science came and talked about their concerns with certain types of development along the corridor and how it affects some of the activities they do. We had folks from the schools, both Pitt County Schools and PCC. We had several neighborhood leaders, particularly from the Rinston District, were there, as well as citizen boards, planning boards. We had folks from economic development and business groups and industry groups, as well as utilities, and we wrapped up the day with our staff and elected officials. I said it's just some folks. These are Pitt County and PCC folks that were able to attend and give some input on the development of the plan, as well as some of the local staff, folks that we're working with. We also have defined the actual corridor study area. You know, it encompasses five interchanges on the proposed bypass. It starts up at 264, where you're coming into Greenville, extends south around Greenville and Winterballet, and down towards Aiden. As far as the boundary area itself, we did take in some additional area, not just immediately adjacent to the corridor, but started looking at how this corridor is going to affect some of these surrounding areas. So you see out to the west, it takes in Ballard's Crossroads, extends to the east into Greenville and Winterballet, and generally follows NC... I said it's just some folks, these are, uh, Pitt County and PCC folks that were able to attend and, and give some input on the development of the plan, as well as some of the local staff, folks that we're working with. Uh, we also have defined the actual corridor study area. You know, it, it encompasses five interchanges on the, the proposed bypass. It starts up at two sixty-four where you're coming into Greenville, uh, extends south around Greenville and Winterville and down towards Aiden. Uh, as far as the boundary area itself, uh, we did take in some additional area, not just immediately adjacent to the corridor, but started looking at how this corridor is going to affect some of these surrounding areas. Uh, so you see out to the west, it takes in Ballard's Crossroads, uh, extends to the east into Greenville and Winterville, and generally follows NC eleven north, south, uh, or NC eleven south, uh, and then also follows, uh, Roundtree Road and NC nine oh three down to, uh, a point around Jackson Town Road, south of Aiden. Uh, and you see it picks up those two intersections there at one oh two and where it comes into eleven also. We've also formulated a steering committee. Uh, we have, this is comprised of two groups. There's a technical group, which is primarily staff level, uh, focused. We get down more into the weeds of the plan. Uh, and also we have a study oversight group that's comprised of our appointed local officials, mainly pla- uh, planning board members. Uh, they've met twice on January twenty-third and February twenty-seventh. We have our third meeting tomorrow night. It'll be held at Winterville Town Hall. Uh, we're gonna begin discussing some of the visions and the goals for the plan, uh, and, and some of our land use scenarios. Uh, so this is just the group, as you see, we've got a, we've got a very good group. We've got a couple of our county planning board members there. Uh, we also have folks from GUC, DOT, um, some Aiden folks, Winterville. We have, we have a pretty good representation of this area, I think. And some of the things they're starting to look at, uh, is some of the existing conditions that, that go into the, the, the development of this plan, uh, from, for some things such as the demographic information, population growth, housing, income, employment, uh, but also they're looking at the existing land uses in, in that area, as well as the land supply, what's available, uh, what is being utilized, what is underutilized, uh, as well as environmental constraints, things like floodplain, uh, any kind of repairing buffers or, or, uh, hydro soils. Uh, they've also gone through our, and when I say they, I mean our consultant, Stuart. Uh, that's, that's the firm that's working with us to help develop this plan. Uh, Stuart looked at, uh, some of the existing plans and policies for all of our communities. Uh, they looked at the shared goals and started seeing what sort of commonalities we have and started compiling those. Uh, then they started looking at the features of those proposed interchange areas, and they looked at a, a bu- about a one-mile buffer around each interchange and started looking at how much land is available, how much is, uh, how many constraints are there on those areas, because we know that those interchange areas are going to be sort of our focus for development. So some of our next steps, uh, again, I mentioned, we have our steering committee, our third meeting is tomorrow night. Uh, they're gonna begin looking at some of this land use modeling and suitability of some of these areas. And by that, what I mean is Stuart has a, a program called Community Vis, and they can plug in all this information, all this data from all these, uh, existing conditions that they've analyzed, and it generates sort of a heat map that shows, okay, where are the areas that are most appropriate for residential growth, what's appropriate for commercial growth, where is appropriate for industrial? And so we take all that analysis and we start plugging that in and, and making up our, or developing our land use scenarios and where we want to see our future growth and development occurring. And then the, the area that we're probably most excited about is our public engagement efforts. Uh, we can do all this analysis and we can do all this modeling, we as planners, you know, we, we tend to think we know everything, but we don't really. And so we, we need to get public involvement, we need to get the input from the people that, that live and work and own property and businesses in this, in this community, in this area. So on April ninth, we're gonna be holding a community meeting, uh, or workshop. It's gonna be at the Go As Student Center at PCC. Uh, it'll be from four o'clock to seven o'clock PM. I cordially invite every one of the members of this board to attend that night to give input. It's gonna be an open house workshop, so it's gonna be a drop-in, drop-out kind of event. There's not gonna be a formal presentation, so if you can't be there at four o'clock on the dot, that's not a problem, you're not gonna miss anything. And we're gonna have several stations set up. There's gonna be stations on land use, transportation, parks and rec, that sort of thing. Uh, and so I would highly advise if, if any of y'all are available for that time, to please come out, see us, and give us your input. Uh, one of the other things we've got is a online survey. That survey is live now, it'll run probably through to the end of April. Uh, at the meeting on the ninth, we're also gonna have a station set up with laptops or tablets that people can get online if they don't have internet access at home. Uh, they can get online, hit there and take that survey, and we're also gonna have hard copies that'll be available. So this is the link for the survey, it's pitcountync.gov backslash survey. We also have a project website, it's pitcountync.gov backslash SW bypass plan, and so we'll have links to the survey. As we did start developing parts of this plan, we'll have all that information on there available as well. So, uh, really would like to get as much input as we can. Uh, so again, if, if any of the board members, if you have people that are interested or, or provide questions, please direct them to our survey, as well as our, our project website, and, uh, feel free to give us a call. Uh, here's my information, get in with the planning department. Uh, we also have a project manager, Jake Petroski with Stuart, and there's his contact information as well, and, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
As was indicated in your agenda, this is, uh, information purposes only. You've had a lot of presentations here about meetings and committees. Uh, if you have any questions to the public, I'm talking now, uh, feel free to contact the planning board. Does the commissioners have any questions of what's been presented here tonight? If not, we thank you and, uh, take use of what's on our list.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Kelly?
Next we have James Rhodes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, you may recall, last month, we had Division Planning Engineer Jeff Cavan is here to talk about a safety improvement along NC eleven. It was at the intersection of Reedie Ranch. Well, Jeff's back tonight and he's gonna be providing a bit more information of other improvements. Eric just, uh, mentioned about our Southwest Bypass. So your package map, or the map that's in your package tonight, um, the portion that you'll be hearing this report on from Jeff, uh, takes off at the southern terminus of the Southwest Bypass, just south of Aiden, run through the county line with Lenore County and on down to the proposed intersection with the Harvey Parkway. So that's about eleven miles, so you're talking about, if you came in from Farmville, hit the Southwest Bypass, that's about eleven miles. Hit this portion, you've got about twenty-two miles total before you get down to the Parkway, uh, coming near the Global Trans Park. So with that, Jeff's gonna provide a bit more information and, um, tell you what's gonna come up in the near future with that project.
Sure. Thanks, James. Um, I got my finger on the trigger here. Uh, but this is our project, uh, this is the latest, one of the latest ones we've had, we've been working on. Um, it's to upgrade NC eleven to a freeway status, and when we say freeway, we're talking about, uh, controlled access. So this will be a fully controlled access facility. Um, I would say an interstate, but that's not completely accurate because it doesn't have an interstate shield, but it would be interstate quality road. Um, and it would, like James said, it starts there with the Southwest Bypass ends in Pitt County and goes all the way to the CF Harvey Parkway, which we just broke ground on a couple of weeks ago. It's about ten and a half, eleven miles. Uh, you see it's presently estimated at a hundred and ninety-five million. Right now, the right-of-way, uh, we're expected to get a right-of-way in two thousand twenty-five with construction following in two thousand twenty-seven. However, um, what we've been given, uh, orders from the secretary is to work on every project in our ten-year plan and work on it just like it was due tomorrow. So we are working as fast as we can to get projects to the point of getting them to right-of-way. Um, if we get it to that point, or when we get it to that point, at that point, if the funds are there, we will move on into the right-of-way stage. So it, it says two thousand twenty-five, but it could come a lot quicker than that. Just want to make sure y'all are aware of that. This is a typical, typical section, what we call it, so it's kind of what it would look like, um, kind of like two sixty-four going to Wilson, if you will, uh, twelve-foot lanes, a big wide median, um, and then a, a wide outside lane as well for cars that broke down or needed to pull off on the side of the road. And that's a little bit better view of it. But you see, it takes about a three-hundred-foot right-of-way through there, and again, it, um, is a fully controlled access, so it wouldn't have any driveways coming out to it, it wouldn't have any interchange, uh, inner, um, intersections, would have inter, interchanges, so talking about bridges, bridges and, uh, interchanges. The northern tie-in, as you see, this aerial shot of, uh, Southwest Bypass. And then that's where it ties in, and just kind of to acclimate, um, I'll show you an aerial here that's just, uh, it's just south of the DuPont plant. So that green line in the interchange there, that's gonna be what we just started working on, and that'll take you straight over to the Global Trans Park. There's an aerial of it, you see the DuPont plant there in the, on the right side, and right there in the middle where it says eleven and has the, uh, M on there for Highway eleven, that's just to the north of that, right in there is where that interchange is. It's our project timeline, um, the project's been put in our scoring criteria, we got it, uh, scored. Uh, it, this is a kind of unique project because it was seven percent in the Greenville MPO. Um, it's about thirty, thirty-eight percent in the Mideast, which y'all are, you know, part of, and then about, um, fifty-something percent in, uh, Lenore County and the Eastern Carolina RPO. So it was in, actually through planning organizations. So we're, we're doing the engineering design right now. Uh, we're just starting to do a lot of the surveys, work out there, um, looking at the natural environment, but also the human environment, um, looking at, you know, everything that's there in that corridor, um, and then we'll start working on some designs, um, and then when we get to a certain point, we'll start having public involvement. We are going to, um, the consultant will be sending out postcards to those, uh, people that are, are border the road, um, supposed to be next month. And as far as what I've heard, that's still on schedule, so in April, uh, some citizens may be getting postcards. That's why I wanted to come for y'all, to y'all before that happens, so if y'all start getting phone calls saying, "What is this?", at least you'll have a little bit of background of what's coming. So we'll move from, from that and, and like I say, get through final design and then, uh, eventually right-of-way in construction. You have any questions? I know we're coming to you at the very beginning, uh, we're in the past, DOT would come to you after we've got like a twenty-five percent design plan, and we've kind of changed up on that. Uh, we're, we're managing the projects locally, so we want to involve the local officials just as soon as we can. The flip side of that is we don't have a whole lot of information to give you, uh, so we're just coming to, to let you know what we're working on and what's coming down the, coming down the pipe.
Thank you for your report, as the previous, this is for information purposes, but does the board have any questions of, of this presentation? If not, we thank you and appreciate you. Manager.
Next we have the monthly financial report for February eighth of two thousand eighteen. Brian Barnett, would you come forward?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Board, um, you should have a copy of the financial report ending at February twenty-eighth. If you had any questions particular about where we stand year-to-date.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Oh, no.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Good presentation, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we'd, we'd also like to, um, to follow up on my comments from our last meeting on March the twelfth regarding, um, just wanted to provide a further clarification, explanation regarding the, um, um, delinquent taxes for the current year and our overestimation of those. Brian has prepared a report to, brief report to give you tonight, if we can go into that.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, at our last meeting, we did address you that there was a, uh, issue of our delinquent prior year taxes, and that has caused us to go into the next budget cycle, asking our departments to go, or at least to start to process all flat. Um, so we wanted to give you an explanation of why we came to that conclusion. Um, and when we look at our prior year delinquent taxes, um, we are seeing a major reduction in those available taxes based on two, um, two factors that we have done, uh, one being we have taken a very strong progressive approach to collecting our taxes during the current year. Uh, we've also worked with the state, when the state took over the motor vehicle taxes, um, and they have seen a strong collection of current year taxes. When you combine those two strong collection, uh, processes, you end up with a smaller amount of delinquent taxes to collect. Um, so therefore, as we do better on the front end, there's just less available to collect on the back end. Therefore, going forward with our budget, uh, we cannot continue to budget as strong of a number that we've seen in the past on our prior year delinquent taxes. So as you will see, probably, um, towards the end of April, we are shooting for the April twenty-third goal to get you your requested budget for next year. Um, you will see almost a two million dollar reduction in our prior year taxes. Just because, simply put, the trend, as you can see from my graph here in the blue line, the stronger we collect, the less that's available. So as you see here in green, our combined collection rate since two thousand twelve has gone from ninety-seven percent to ninety-nine point two seven percent. So the better we collect, the less there is. Give it to you, another way of looking at it, think about it in basketball. If you take better shots, there's less rebounds. That's what our tax collection department is doing. So therefore, going forward... Oops, got ahead of myself. Uh, we've had, we have asked our departments to start the process flat. We are taking consideration, uh, that they do have items for expansion, and we are looking at those items, and as we continue to work on the budget process, we're going to examine those items and compare them to our revenues to see if we have room for expansion. So are there any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but, and, and you don't need to go into any further detail, but I, I would say that I just don't fully understand this because we projected or we estimate we're gonna collect so much money in taxes. Now, whether they're collected, uh, on the, on the ordinary schedule or, or as delinquent, I don't see how that impacts the total amount of revenue.
Well, we have both, we have two pots. The current year tax, which is the majority of all your money, eighty-six, eighty-seven million dollars worth of ad valorem taxes, and then the second pot being your prior year, and you, we can collect up to ten years' worth of delinquent taxes. And like Brian said, we, we have been aggressive and you've seen the collection rate go, go up, and, and also the fact with tag and tax, once that took over, um, four or five years ago, basically our, our collection of motor vehicles is now technically ninety-nine point nine percent, really it's a hundred percent, because there, there's no delinquent motor vehicle taxes anymore because tag and tax, you have to, to have a license tag, you have to have it, you have to pay the state and the state reimburses us. We, um, we have, um, I guess when those funds, when those prior years were booked, and Brian, you can help me explain this, they're booked as current year and we were continuing to carry the prior year amount, which we had a disjointed process. There's nothing that, that tax did wrong at all. I mean, ta- tax was right on cue, I don't want that to, to think there was any issue down, down tax, they've been doing what they're supposed to be doing. It was how we were booking those dollars on the books, and, um, part of the process too, by the time we get our audit, the audit is how far back?
It's two years behind.
So we just really began to see the, this trend, um, in the past two months, and it's, um, it's causing a correction in the July one. We are, we do have growth in the, um, ad valorem taxes for the new year, July one, like we've had in the past. We've probably got two and three-quarters percent, three-quarters percent growth of ad valorem tax payments due to construction, commercial, residential, all the taxable property, plus we have growth in sales tax, but we're, to, to reset the bar on this, part of that growth will be ate up by, by correcting the, um, delinquent tax number.
So did we overestimate the total amount of revenue available?
In delinquent taxes, yes, but not in, in ad valorem taxes, that was right on, right on spot. In regular, current year, ad valorem taxes was right on spot, it was the ten-year look-back.
That answered your question, Mr. Goes.
No, I'm not.
I didn't think it did. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Next we have the manager's report. We have your next meeting dates in April, April ninth and twenty-third. This will be the second, fourth Monday, um, due to the Easter weekend. We're not on the first and third Monday schedule, but second and fourth. Item B, wanted to make the board aware, we are scheduling a, um, a groundbreaking ceremony for the animal shelter expansion renovation. That will be on Tuesday, April the third at ten AM. Welcome you to come out, we're putting together the agenda on that. It's not gonna be elaborate groundbreaking, but it will be a groundbreaking as we celebrate, um, that achievement moving forward on that project. Item C, the NCECC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District Meeting will be in Craven County, April fourth. I believe we've mentioned that in, before, and any commissioners who would like to attend it, they'll let the clerk know, she will, um, make sure you're signed up, and we'll probably take a van and, um, drive there collectively if you would so desire. Um, item D, as a follow-up to the March twelfth, um, Commissioners Meeting, we have scheduled a joint meeting with the Pitt County Board of Education, Pitt County School System, School Board, and we've invited the, um, um, law enforcement chiefs from the various, uh, Pitt County municipalities, as well as, I think, believe we're inviting Viden, PCC, ECU, um, to attend as well, to talk, um, jointly on the topic of, um, school security, and Dr. Linker and I have met on this, and we are in the process of, um, working out that, that agenda to exactly how that would, um, this will transpire.
Okay.
Um, item E, the Animals Services Department, wanted to be announced, they have applied for a PetSmart grant, and it could be up to a hundred thousand dollars, no match, and, but they did submit that prior to the board.
to the board meeting. And then the last item that's not on the agenda, I'm calling that Item F, PCC is going to be having a ribbon coating ceremony on their Greenville Annex Center, this will be tomorrow at 3:40 p.m. in the afternoon, and then there will be a regular Board of Trustees meeting following that, and this is, I believe, the Center on Greenville Drive, on, Greenville Center on Memorial Drive. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Next.
Next, you have Items for Consent.
I should tell a brief.
Second it.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. So order. All right, next.
Next, for Items for Decision, the first item we have is a Ronald McDonald Lease Amendment and Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, the county attorney's going to handle that one.
Yes, and that's the matter for which Mr. Van Buren is present, from the Ronald McDonald House, and he can stay in his seat unless there are any questions from the board. As you may recall, the Ronald McDonald House, we previously approved on the land that they lease from the county, an expansion of their facility, and as that's progressing, they have had to work with the city of Greenville, and part of their plan involves a retention pond or a stormwater maintenance feature. In order to install that feature, there is a maintenance agreement that the city of Greenville needs to have signed, and that would be signed by the owner of the property, meaning Pitt County. Ronald McDonald House has agreed to assume those responsibilities that are put upon the owner in that document, and have memorialized that in a lease amendment that goes hand-in-hand with that. So we have Mr. Van Buren present, if there are any questions from the board, if not, we'd ask you to consider and approve those two documents so that they can move forward with our project.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Where exactly are the funds coming from to build the pond?
The Ronald McDonald, yes, go ahead.
We are handling the building of the pond with our current expansion.
You're paying for it.
Yes, sir.
The city of Greenville isn't paying for it through their stormwater funds.
No, sir.
I wanted to get that out there, thank you.
Do we have any questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
In discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So order. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, y'all have a wonderful evening.
All right, Mr. Rhodes? Can you be as specific?
Not tonight, no.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Rose Lee, we have some students in the audience from, and I don't know what class or what school they are, and I see two of them are going out, so if you, we want to thank them for coming, or...
All right, any students that have not departed that Ann was referencing? I think that took care of it, ma'am.
No, they're...
Oh, excuse me, tell us your name, young man, where are you from? Or both of you.
Greg Dixon, from South Central High School.
All right, appreciate you being here.
What?
Tell us louder.
Thank you for coming, come back and see us, and hope you benefit from your presence here tonight. Thank you, Ann, okay, James.
Mr. Chairman, with the direction of the board from your last meeting, staff has prepared a number of items associated with the Woodmore Farms subdivision, subdivision street improvement project, and tonight, we have a package before you, but there are some background factors we wanted to at least address with you, and give you a little bit more insight before those actions. First, just to orient you to this particular project, this will be our second one that we've undertaken. The first project was just adjacent to Woodmore Farms and Woodmore Subdivision, just to the north on the screen. Woodmore Farms actually has the remainder of Trails End that was, the first segment was improved with the Woodmore subdivision improvements, but again, you can also see there's an existing state road, Wesley Lane, that kind of comes into the interior of this subdivision, that's shown in the black center line here, that is not part of this project. So the ones that are bounded in red here, Saddle Way, Trails End, Trotters Way, Mayor's Way, are the ones that we're looking at tonight, also a portion of Wesley Lane as well. This also shows on your screen tonight, those properties that have petitions that have been signed by the affected property owners, so this is critical because of our 75% threshold that's needed to progress forward with this particular project. You may recall, general statutes require at least 75% of the landowners, the affected landowners, to sign the petitions, we've got exactly that. We have 39 of the 52 landowners that have signed petitions, and as far as the lineal road frontage, just over 75%, right at 76% of those properties that we have petitions for, actually account for 76% of the overall roadways. So, cost estimate-wise, we've got a wide range of estimates here, and these are strictly just estimates. What you'll see in your resolution, that I'll allude to a little bit later, is that we went with the high number. We've had a lot of discussion in-house between the county attorney, county engineer, and others, as to why the 681 was most appropriate, and we'll lay our hat on, this was the contractor that did the Woodmore subdivision street, did a good job, and in turn, we felt like that particular contractor was better versed at moving forward with this one. So again, just an estimate, but it does give us an idea of what we are looking at for this project. Also, remember, this is a project that will be overseen by the Department of Transportation, that end result here is, we don't accomplish anything if we don't have DOT take these roads over for perpetual maintenance. So in turn, it is vital that DOT is involved, DOT also has contractors on specific lists that have certain activities that they have been sanctioned for or approved for. The higher contractor price here comes from a contractor who is on the list that can carry out all the work that's necessary. So again, looking at our policy, and also the general statutes that go along with it, 52 properties typically will look at a 10-year repayment period, this is a lot, again, a very large range between the high and low figures, if we use the ones that we have so far, anywhere from $384 per year to over $1,300. That excludes, what we'll talk about in a minute, is interest that may be charged and any other expenses. And again, all this, in this process that we'll go through, which is very lengthy, and I'll show you the draft schedule in just a minute, we will need to go out through a formal bid process to ensure that all the items are covered as they should be, just as we did with Woodmore. So as far as the draft schedule, starting tonight, we have several actions for you to take, including the adoption of the preliminary assessment resolution, and also setting the date for the consideration of the final assessment resolution. Going through the remainder, we'd also, little change in order this time with Woodmore Farms, we're looking at soliciting proposals, or actually having the formal bid for the project before we bring the final assessment resolution back to you. That way, we'll know exactly what we're looking at as far as the expenses. During that same time, we'll also look at gathering information from particular lending institutions to see exactly what kind of loan that we can get for this project. May 21st is our proposed or tentative public hearing date for the final assessment resolution. If things progress forward from that, we'll look at awarding the contract, we will already have our bids in, award the contract to the contractor sometime in early summer, maybe June, contractor's probably going to take three to four months to mobilize, get everything together for that. Remember, we've got a tight window of opportunity, Department of Transportation only likes us to do this type of work during certain periods of the year, so it's critical we get that done before the end of fall. After that work is completed, it's on to the Board of Transportation for acceptance, and then we'll go right back through the process, as you just wrapped up with Woodmore, that is publishing the preliminary assessment role and scheduling a public hearing for the final assessment role. So again, this is pretty much paralleling what we did with Woodmore Subdivision last year, as far as the timeframe's concerned. So several motions included in your package tonight. Number one, the amended policy. The county manager indicated that he'd like this brought back, so we could actually mention that we would look at actually charging any type of interest that is going along with our bank loans, so that is included in your package tonight, it's just a minor amendment to that policy. The preliminary assessment resolution that's been drafted by the county attorney is included in your package, and again, this is the first formal action to move forward with this project. Also, setting a May 21st public hearing date for the final assessment resolution to be considered, and as I mentioned, over this interim period between now and that public hearing date, looking at soliciting proposals from lending institutions, as well as soliciting the formal bids from any of the qualified contractors for the project. So with that, Mr. Chairman, a lot of information, welcome any questions you may have, and I do know there are several folks here from Woodmore Farms that may be interested in possibly having an opportunity to speak tonight, if you so desire.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James, on the three different bids, if this moves forward tonight, would the lower bidders have an opportunity to get on the DOT list prior to the formal bids being sent out?
That is a process in and of itself, they would have to work through DOT to get all those qualifications met.
But that not being on it tonight doesn't preclude them from participating in the formal bid that we'll have later?
It does not preclude them from participating, but they have to make sure they meet those requirements before we can award a bid.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Glenn?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rose.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about DOT taking over the streets after this process is over. Is it a sure thing, or sort of like a guarantee, or it is a high probability?
It's about as sure as we can get. Again, DOT is actively involved through the bid review, as far, and as well as any of the construction out there. So yes, the whole intent with their involvement is, at the very end, they sign off that everything has been met, and then it's a formality to move through the Board of Transportation.
And they did take over the other one.
Yes, ma'am, we did not finalize the project until...
I didn't ask to have another neighborhood with potholes at the end of the street, and the citizens not be happy.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman. I do, I do have one comment. I don't, I don't like the way that first recommendation is worded, because to me, if I read that, it says that the county is charging interest, and the county is not charging interest if we, if we go through a bank loan. What I would prefer for that to say is that we want to amend the policy to, to acknowledge the inclusion of interest charged by the bank if the project is financed by a bank, because what we're doing is passing that along, we are not charging interest.
But you finished, what did you finish, Jim?
Yes, and that would also, that verbiage would also be changed on page 46 of the policy.
Scott wants to respond, and then Mayor.
I think that sounds better.
I wanted to maybe address some of the concerns of the residents who looked at the first project, the Woodmore project, where the policy only says that the county may or can charge interest. That first project, we actually used the county savings account fund balance to bankroll that project, we don't have sufficient fund balance to, as the second project, third project, fourth project comes along, we will, we will extinguish every dime we have in fund balance if we are going to be paving all the roads in Pitt County under petition. And I think we kind of had a lesson learned that we really probably should have done in bank loan in the first one, let the assessments pay back and retire that debt. So at this point, moving forward, yes, we are kind of changing the, the rules of the game per se. Two recent bank loans we've had, interest was 2.99%, next one's 3.12%, I'm not sure what a bank loan, by the time we get out the gate on this project, would be, but we're just trying to recapture our costs, and again, we don't have sufficient monies in the county's coffers to, to do this, and keep a, a stable fund balance.
Well, Mr. Gass's request though doesn't, doesn't bother that, Scott?
No.
All right, Mr. Gass, do you have...
No, I'm perfectly okay, I just...
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion that we, that we proceed forward.
With the addition that you made?
Yes, with the change, yes.
I accept that motion.
Yes, I had one question. What exactly is the status of the homeowners who didn't sign the petition? Are they scot-free, or are they going to be paying Scott's additional tax?
No, sir, that's, that's a very good question. I had that question posed by someone that hadn't signed the petition today. When you're assessing these properties, just like with Woodmore, we had two that did not sign petitions, they are assessed equally among all the benefited property owners. So the 13 that have not signed, if everything stays as is right now, the 13 that have not signed would be assessed also if this progresses forward.
Mr. Chairman, another point to be, for those who have signed the petition today, and you're part of the 75%, by the time we get the bids, and by the time we go to the final assessment resolution, there'll be a public hearing, if the bids are way high, this is not carved in stone, and I'll ask the county attorney maybe to reiterate, when, what, what point this is carved in stone.
The point of no return on your, on the petitions is your final assessment resolution, which follows the public hearing. That's one of the reasons why we have reordered the series of events in this particular project, so that folks can know exactly what that actual cost will be before that point of no return. When we did it in Woodmore, the lesson learned was, we had folks locked in before we ever knew what the bid was going to be, and they couldn't have backed out if the bid came in askew. Of course, the board could have not done the project, but this allows some more flexibility. The, the actual 75% threshold is locked in stone and must be met by that final assessment resolution.
Glenn.
You said there was four approved contractors with DOT here? Is that what you said? You did not say that, okay, I'd heard you wrong. I was just making sure I had everything ordered in my head, and, and just before we moved forward, it says that April, May is when to solicit proposals from a qualified contractor, so that gives the lower bidders a chance to try to get on that list prior to that, and was there anything to account for the discrepancies of why, or were they just throwing numbers out, or did they have a, do you know the metrics they were using?
I do not. They all worked off the same punch list from DOT, but outside of that, I'm not sure how they came up with their numbers.
I just wanted to make sure we had time for that to happen before we moved it forward, but that, you know, this, we're allowed to keep our timeline, but at the same time, there's room for those contractors to try to get on board there.
We, we as staff would love to see a qualified bid quote of 199 or less, that would be, that would be great, but we will not know until it's properly bid out and that's been vetted.
How much was the other Woodmore?
Woodmore was right at 106,000, so if you run the numbers, what we've got is about four times as much lineal road frontage with this project, what you're seeing is about six times the amount of cost, and given the amount of increases in some of these resources of late, that's not surprising, so it's not that far out of kilter even the high number at this point.
How long ago was it that we completed Woodmore?
We completed the work in Woodmore in the fall of last year.
Okay. It's no further, excuse me, Beth, you finish?
Of the total number of residents, how many of the total number of residents are approving this, as compared to the ones that's not?
Have 52 total, 39 have signed the resolution at this point.
And as you indicated, those individuals that did not sign it, not approve of it, what option would they have other than selling, or just, I know, I understand that the majority ruled on this, and they're going along with it, but other options, I guess, be...
They had the option of petitioning you if they would not like to move forward with the project. So again, this board has to take additional actions, adopting the final assessment resolution being the next item after tonight's meeting, so that would be one... So that would be one recourse. Also, folks, as the county attorney has alluded to, if the prices come back very high, we could see folks that might want to withdraw their petition. So the numbers get off kilter at that point, too.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor, the motion, in the cap raising your right hand. So now do we have a motion for a public hearing on May 21st? So, Mary? All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered, next.
Next agenda item, you have the Roanoke Medical Transport Request for a non-emergency EMS franchise. Jim McArthur will come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, how you doing tonight? Here on behalf of the EMS Oversight Committee tonight, to bring before you, Roanoke Medical Transportation Company has asked to get a franchise in Pitt County. They would, they came before the Oversight Committee on March 8th. They submitted their application to me for review ahead of that. Had a chance to review their application. They do meet all of the requests that we set forth in the franchise application. They appear to be a reputable company. They are here tonight. Mr. Eric Rayner is going to be the Operations Manager in Pitt County, and Ms. Vicky Leggett, the owner, and Mr. Leggett beside her as well. So they'd be willing to answer any questions or give any background on their company if you'd like to have it. Currently, we have four non-emergency franchises in the county. We did approve another one, but they never did follow the protocol for getting set up in the county. So right now, we're still at four. I believe that this is a reasonable request. They will need to follow through with getting their Pitt County employees released to practice as EMTs in Pitt County for our medical director, and also complete criminal background checks on those guys to function in Pitt County as part of our franchise request. And the only thing the other, that they've not done yet is open up a storefront office in Pitt County. But as we've done in the past, I asked them that they could wait on purchasing or renting a storefront until their application was in fact approved. So we will go through that process with them of inspection and opening up after we get that approval, assuming we do so. And we'll submit any paperwork to the Office of EMS at the state on their behalf. Is there any questions I could answer for you?
Oh, I have one. Go ahead. No, my only question is, on the storefront presence, do they have a general idea where it'll be? Or do they have a pretty good idea where it will be located?
I would direct that question to them, because I don't know.
Go for it, sir.
Could you come to the podium?
This is Eric Rayner with Roanoke Transport.
At this time, we're looking at an office on Memorial Drive, address is 633 South Memorial.
Okay, that's, that's excellent, thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, Beth, what'd you need?
I was going to make a motion, I just, what, what, what was the maximum number that we had at one time of the non-emergency?
The most we've had, to my knowledge, is five.
Okay.
I've got one, there's several places in here says that there's an attachment.
Yes, sir, attachment.
Maybe mine notes doesn't have that. Does the other Commissioners have those things in there?
Fifty-two.
It's a receipt.
I see the receipt, but... Like Articles of Incorporation, you have an attachment on there?
No.
I've got a full...
That's, that's all right.
I've got a 60-page...
All right, we got a motion. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I have a question.
All right, Tom.
At what point is too many? Non-emergencies? Twenty? Twenty-five? I mean, we're going to have five or six now.
Are you asking me, sir, I'm sorry?
I'm just asking a question. When does competition become so great that it's no longer profitable enough? Certain people are run, certain companies are run out of business.
So, as it relates to non-emergency transportation, it's a, it's a different market than it used to be. The profitability is different than it was 10 or 15 years ago. However, as long as companies want to come to Pitt County and open a franchise to do point-to-point transport, and they believe there's a market for that, the EMS system can support that. So, in my personal opinion, that as long as those owners, operators want to come here and they believe there's space for them, then I would support their, and the reputable companies, I would support their applications. We have seen in the last five or six years that it's not as easy to run one of these companies as it used to be with one of the largest in the state in the southeast going out of business with Johnson Ambulance Service. So it is difficult, but it is doable. And so, I think the market kind of sorts that out.
Okay.
Anything else, Tom? Scott, you want to say something?
If I can just make a brief comment. In the, in the past, the Board of Commissioners really considered this private enterprise and did not want to put a cap on the number of those. And I think also in these franchise agreements, do we not have language in there saying that in the event of an emergency or evacuation, they could be asked or directed to assist the county in evacuation efforts? So that might be a reason we don't want to cap them, for at least one reason.
So that's correct. We do build these non-emergency franchises into our system plan. We do have to have 24-hour contact information for them as part of the franchise ordinance so that they can be used in the event of disaster. Historically, that scenario is train crash, plane crash type of event, and we do exercise that occasionally.
It's chemical explosion, or if you had a large area to...
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Well, the only other thing, too, is that you all, I'm assuming, have a business in Roanoke? No, is this, will this be the only place?
She said yes.
Yes, you said yes.
So, so they...
In Martin County was what I was assuming.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have an office in Williamson, North Carolina, in Martin County. We do, we are franchised right now in Martin County and Beaufort County, and we're just looking to expand into Pitt County.
And that's usually kind of the way it works, I think. It's not just one county most of the time that people work out of.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, all in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered, thank you. How about the Agriculture Board Appointment? What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to reappoint Mr. Rex Fleming.
I second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, same for the Agriculture Advisor Board. What's the Board's pleasure?
So moved.
Is I second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered, Farmers Market Committee, what's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Comments, Ann?
No, I just wanted to, to recognize the students, because I got a call wanting to know when our meetings are held and what time, because it was a class, it's a class project, I guess, for South Central. We, we've been having students come in and out, and that's, that's a good thing that they want to see.
Well, it's good to recognize them, too, and here in the future, if you see someone that I have not paid attention to, please remind me. Appreciate you, Mr. Gash. Charles?
I ceded my time there, Ann.
Beth?
Nothing.
No, Mary?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say tonight, congratulations to the North Pitt girls who won the championship. And at the next evening meeting, I'd like to have the manager invite them to come. But we were going through so much in, in our area of this second district that I forgot to include it in the meeting, but I did not want that to go unnoticed because back to back, they have won the championship.
That is quite an accomplishment, Mary, and I'm sure you've orchestrated that with the manager about normally we have them come in anyway. Anything else, Ms. Mary?
No, I've already prayed for it.
Tom? Melvin?
Again, I'd like to echo Ann's comments on the students that are here to participate in this, in this process, the political process, as far as the city. And as a point of motion, this young man is a member of our church, Mount Calgary Free Will Baptist Church, and he is a very fine gentleman, so it's certainly a pleasure to see him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that, will you?
Is I second it? Raise your right hand. Thank you for coming, enjoyed it.